I call the September 7, 2021 Regular Meeting of Council to Order. Councilperson Marn will give the invocation this evening.
Ready, sir?
Mm-hmm.
Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. Help us to use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom with a continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community we represent.
But the agents of the United States of America, to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Here.
Mr. Blake?
Here.
Mr. Donovan?
Here.
Mrs. Dowling?
Here.
Mr. Kirchner?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Landik?
Here.
Approval of minutes. Council, you receive the minutes of the August 17, 2021 Work Session.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes. Minutes of the August 17, 2021 Work Session have been approved. Council, you also receive the minutes of the August 17, 2021 Regular Meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes. The minutes of the August 17, 2021 Regular Meeting have been approved. Public hearings, we have none. Tabled legislation, we have none. New legislation, ordinance number 21-0-053.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager and director of law to enter into a settlement agreement in the matter of State EXREL Bolton et al. versus City of Mentor et al. and declaring an emergency.
I'd like Mr. Zeeman to kind of give a synopsis of this piece of legislation. Sir?
May I take the podium, Mr. President?
Yes, you may. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Submitted to the city by, I'll refer to them collectively as the Boltons. There's multiple stakeholders over the 11 parcels and the 186 acres, which we constantly refer to as the Bolton Estate. Submitted to my office is a proposed settlement agreement that would end the pending litigation that was brought by that ownership group. As the council is aware, the allegations of that complaint is that the property, as currently zoned, is not constitutional, primarily to C1 zone, that's our conservation zoning. And the arguments made is that it is not rationally zoned, it does not allow for a reasonable economic return on the property, and in light of the changed circumstances in that area at the 615 interchange and I-90, and the development that's happened in Newell Creek, that material changes have happened over the course of years that do not warrant preservation of the current C1 zoning. Again, that's very painting with a broad brush relative to the allegations in the complaint. I have received a proposed settlement agreement fully executed, and that is the reason it is on your agenda tonight for deliberation and action. It is my recommendation that council accept the settlement agreement. I'll sort of broadly go through why I feel it is an equitable settlement, consistent with the purpose and intents of the city's zoning code, and consistent with the facts and the law. Just to orient everyone, hopefully I haven't. Zoom in on that a little bit. I don't know who has the controller, if anyone.
You do.
Oh, you're going to trust me to work this?[238.51][238.51](laughing) Again, the property bordered by 615, I-90, Johnny Cake Ridge, 186 acres. Here you can see the Kirtland Hills Mentor border. Much of it's been devoted to agricultural use over the years. The actual Bolton Estate house is here. There are some other houses on the property, and again, primarily an agricultural base for many, many, many generations, in fact. I want to talk a little bit then about the fact that it went for referendum, it was very narrowly defeated, as the council is aware, and some of the concerns that arose over that development plan, preservation of the open space, whether or not that truly had legal teeth, the level of control over various aspects of the development, architectural control, and ultimately, what will it look like when it's ultimately built out? And what sort of assurances could there be in place to make sure that the vision, which many members of the community and ultimately this council embraced, actually comes to pass? And in my judgment, the proposed settlement agreement proffered by the Bolton Ownership Group satisfies all of those concerns. First and foremost, the purpose of the C1 zoning, which is to conserve and protect ecologically sensitive areas and other areas with unique features. It was publicly discussed, and I know a lot covered, you know, in depth by various, various experts, the old growth woodlands area in here, very unique in the state of Ohio, and the proposal was, of course, to conserve that in perpetuity. The proposed settlement agreement does that. It, the Boltons have committed to transfer ownership pursuant to a purchase agreement, contingent only on settling this case, to the Western Reserve Land Conservancy, which its reason for being is to conserve property of this nature. Public access pursuant to this proposed settlement agreement shall be provided so that members of the public at large will be able to enjoy this area, not to create ball fields or things of that nature, but again, perhaps those persons who are familiar with Chapeau and Forest will understand the analogy of how wonderful it can be to walk through an old growth forest that will be preserved there for future generations. This proposed settlement agreement has given significant teeth to that preservation, and quite frankly, it is a level of preservation that the public cannot get without significant cost. And as members of council and many members of the public are aware, probably the best example in Mentor, of the cost of preserving open space would be the nature preserve in lagoons up at Headlands. Significant cost to the city. It's beautiful, it's wonderful, everyone recognizes its value. But it did not come cheap, and that litigation resulted in significant monetary compensation to the property owner at that time by the city. Here, there's an opportunity to preserve between Mentor and Kirtland Hills 90 acres of this woodlands. Basically, everything that you're seeing with tree canopy, albeit, over here, this is private property. Everything over here and throughout the tree canopy in the city of Mentor would be preserved. The original proposal was actually smaller. Originally, it was 69 total acres, 35 of those acres were in Mentor, and an additional 34 in Kirtland Hills. The settlement agreement increases the total preserved acreage to 90. All of the additional acres, 21 additional acres, are located in the city of Mentor, bringing up to 56 preserved old woodlands in Mentor. Significantly, the area along Route 84 where you see tree canopy, that was not originally preserved, it will be in this proposed settlement agreement. And then, as you go to the south of the parcel closer to Interstate 90, where you see this tree canopy, the additional acreage is there. So again, 90 total, 34 in Kirtland Hills, 56 in the city of Mentor. Just to give you some idea of the scale, I'll walk you through this a little bit. This obviously was taken in the winter. I think the city's a little greener than this usually. This is the area of the Bolton Estate, this is the 90-some acres, and it's a little bit over here, it's cut off. Just to give some, members of the public some idea of the scope, you can see over here the Great Lakes Mall Development, and comparison, just how large of an area that is. By other means of comparison, it compares extremely favorably Eleanor Garfield Park, 65 total acres, Wildwood, 34 total acres, the new Springbrook Park Gardens, 53 acres. This is comparable to Veterans Park at 100 acres, and obviously, the Mentor Lagoons at 450 eclipses all of that. So it is by any measure significant area of preserved open space available for the public to go and enjoy at no cost to the city. Now, there's certainly a trade-off with that, of course, and as everyone is aware, to preserve that, some development return has to occur. So the other aspects of the proposal would be for the mixed-use development. In that respect, it is virtually identical to what you saw that was placed on the ballot. The sub-areas for residential going to mixed-use town center style, and then a commercial area towards I Interstate 90. Again, there are caps on all of that, so that Subarea A, and I'll go back to this other one. Subarea A, which is approximately these fields here, would be capped at 63 acres. Subarea B, which is the mixed area, the town center, which is across from Norton Parkway, that would be capped at 38 acres. And then, as we go across from where the Cleveland Clinic is going to be located here, that's called Subarea C, more commercial for medical office use, perhaps a hotel, capped at 21 acres. And then, the eight-and-a-half acres of where the current Bolton Estate is, that's earmarked for historic preservation, if possible. If not, to be decided in the future. Now, ultimately, where you're at with this proposed settlement agreement is a situation where we eliminate some of the uncertainties if we move forward with litigation. And one of the aspects that's very challenging, quite frankly, for the property owners and for the city in this litigation, is that it's not necessarily the most homogeneous area that you can imagine. It's 186 acres, which under current zoning could be subdivided into five-acre parcels. So when we're approaching this from a land use perspective and litigation perspective, you really can't approach it as just this one homogeneous parcel divorced from its surroundings, divorced from infrastructure such as Interstate 90 and the interchange at 615. You really have to take a particularized determination of the legal strengths and weaknesses of your case for different areas of the property. Obviously, if we're over at the interchange, where you're talking about limiting the use of that solely to agricultural or the construction of one residence per five acres, you're looking at significant restrictions on land use in an area that has been earmarked for development. One of the aspects that has been pointed out is the 2011 Comprehensive Plan adopted by the city council, which called for this as a special planning area. No specific recommendations were made in the Comprehensive Plan in 2011, but it was recognized as, you know, as early as 10 years ago, that the construction of the I-90 interchange at 615 in 2003 did earmark this area for reconsideration relative to land use. And obviously, the proposal to rezone this pursuant to the planned mixed-use development was in furtherance of that. And one of the things that we're also informed of in terms of how this potentially can move forward is, of course, Newell Creek and the resolution of that, which is also zone C1. You're aware, of course, that, I'll go back to the slide. In a like, in a like manner, Newell Creek sought preservation of some significant open space. Of course, you're familiar with the development, the residential developments here in these quadrants, some of the assisted living memory care facilities, skilled nursing facilities here, Avery, of course, just to situate people for these aerials, new medical office building here, CT Consultants, now known as the Averyly, and of course, this is going to be the Cleveland Clinic development site there. One of the aspects of this development, of this proposed settlement, which I encourage council to accept, is because ultimately, the language in there provides this public body control. Not control for the sake of control, not control just to say you have it, but control to make sure that any modifications in the future are consistent with the city's best interests. And again, I think it informs your decision-making process tonight to look at some history, recent history. Where most people, I think, I hope I'm correct in this assertion, are very excited about having a full-service Cleveland Clinic Hospital here in Mentor to join our other medical care providers and just elevating the quality of service right here at home even further from what we've currently enjoyed. The judgment entry that was entered in the Newell Creek lawsuit really is sort of what legally brought you to that conclusion. Obviously, a lot of work went into that by the administration, by members of council, as well as your predecessors. But legally speaking, there were a lot of proposals that were turned down, and many members of the public wouldn't be aware that very early on, there was a proposal for where the clinic will one day sit in the near future for a supermarket and gas station. The city had the ability, in the context of an agreed judgment entry, to say no, forget it. There was a proposal for apartments there. Again, the city had the ability to say no, legally solid ability to say no to that proposed modification. Again, it was not controlled just for the sake of control, but it was controlled in furtherance of the city's objectives, Class A office, Class A medical, and to make sure that that land was set aside for its highest and best use to serve this community, if not this region. Likewise, in a similar manner, by entering into this settlement agreement, the ultimate decision about modifications to the plan will be vested with council, consistent with our Code of Ordinances. So that when proposed changes come that are inconsistent with those purposes and intents, the ability to say no, that is not consistent with what our goals are. Now, why is it so much better to do that via an agreed entry versus just passing a law? Well, the simple solution, the answer is that laws can be challenged. Laws are subject to court review, and the judiciary does have the ability to take a look at something and find legal deficiencies in what the community's goals are. When a property owner voluntarily enters into a settlement agreement, they are effectively waiving all of those challenges. They are agreeing that, yes, these restrictions on the use of this property, the manner in which it will be developed, and the manner in which it can be changed and modified are things that I'm entering into willingly and voluntarily. That waiver is significant. That type of legal agreement is why Newell Creek has been able to develop in a way that was consistent with the city's objectives and not inconsistent with the city's objectives. Likewise, the language in the proposed settlement agreement, you know, will allow the city, without court intervention, or without court second-guessing, so to speak, to control modifications to the development plan, so that you're insured that, just as with Newell Creek, modifications are in furtherance of what's in the best interest of the neighborhood and the city as well. And so the language in there is really, frankly, more concrete than you can get just by passing a law. A law is something that you impose upon someone. An agreement is something someone signs off on, and the Bolton Ownership Group is willing to sign off on this. And ultimately, again, not control for the sake of control, but control which is very, very, going to be very instrumental as the city potentially looks at a 20-year build-out of this area. And who knows what the market may look like then. That is something that allows you to control for variables that you can't even foresee today, and why a voluntary settlement agreement is, I think, legally a very significant step for this property. Likewise, I think one of the issues that a lot of feedback was given is architecture. Is it really going to look good? And there is language in the proposed settlement agreement where, again, they're agreeing that architectural standards that are set forth in our code will not be legally challenged, that they will abide by those architectural standards. And in fact, incorporated into the proposed settlement agreement are the representations that were made in various stages of the development plan approval process for what the homes would look like, for what the commercial structures would look like, and, as well as other aspects that are a little technical, such as build two lines and setbacks and shared parking. All of that is incorporated as exhibits and part of the settlement agreement, so that it's a very clear map of exactly what this can, what this, how this can be developed, how it can't be developed, and how it can be changed for the positive. So with that, of course, it's a full waiver of any claims, and it would bring an end to any and all litigation related to this, and therefore, I do support its acceptance by this council. Okay, I have some questions at this time, or retake my seat as I'm directed.
Well, thank you, first of all, Law Director, for touching on the basis of the benefits of the settlement legislation that is before us, that you are recommending council to accept. It has taken a long time for us to get to this point. It has involved much discussion on the part of council, much involvement in those discussions with the administration, the Law Director's involvement, the Bolton team's involvement as well. So it's been a long time and a lot of talk to get us to this point. So I want to make sure that hearing the Law Director's summary of where we are now, council, what other questions might you have for the Law Director? Mr. Kirchner?
Just a point of clarification, Joe. At one point during these proceedings, council took the initiative to put into the code that any deviation that, to the plan that formerly would have just gone through the Planning Commission would now have to also come to council. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. So previously, for the public and those that are out here, the change, a substantial deviation or deviation from the plan, whether, for instance, if they wanted to change the type of architecture of a house instead of a garage in the front, maybe in the back, previously would go to the Planning Commission for their approval or denial, and not to council. But now, any type of change similar to that would have to also come to council. So we have this extra control, which I feel very comfortable with.
And I could actually augment that a little bit. There's actually language, "The court shall not retain jurisdiction with respect to any future proposed amendments." In other words, future amendments to the plan, if any, are processed through our Code of Ordinances, as Councilman Kirchner has just indicated. It's not a situation where someone could try to circumvent that by going to court saying, "We think that the court should order the plan be changed," with language which the court does not have, will not have jurisdiction to do that.
Mr. President? Thanks, Joe.
Mr. Donovan?
I'd just like to make everyone aware that we probably worked a year on some of the conditions that we wanted on this property, and there's 23 to 24 huge conditions that are going to go through with this agreement, and I just want to make everybody aware, we could get those out to you sometime, but they're very, they're on structure, designs, types, and it's just a very strong language that they have to follow. Thank you.
With that, Mr. Law Director, you may take your seat again.
Thank you.
So I don't go astray on this. Again, this is ordinance number 21-0-053, the settlement agreement legislation. Council, what is your pleasure?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes. Ordinance number 21-0-053 has been approved. Ordinance number 21-0-054.
An ordinance to authorize advances of funds and revisions to appropriations and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Malinowski, please. Thank you, Mr. Philippiak, members of council. This ordinance firstly authorizes two temporary cash advances out of the city's general fund. Firstly, to fund the cemetery fund for additional columbarium and other expenditures related to infrastructure. And also, secondly, a federal grant fund established for the Mentor Marsh Public Access Boardwork Phase II project is in need of cash. And the second section is the appropriations that follow both of these funds, in addition to a general fund appropriation related to the subdivision testing and inspection fees at the Brookview Reserve subdivision. There's a revenue source that offsets that. I would recommend approval of the ordinance. Thank you.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes. Ordinance number 21-0-054 has been approved. Ordinance number 21-0-055.
An ordinance accepting the bid and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Waste Management of Ohio Incorporated for the collection of residential solid waste, recyclables, and yard waste and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President, and believe it or not, council, it's been nearly 10 years since we have addressed this contract for refuse collection. And approximately 10 years ago, Mentor became the first and only community in Lake County at that time that had both curbside pickup and curbside recycling mandatory for all of our households. That was a big deal at the time. We were able to do that by lowering the cost of services that were presently in place at that time, and we've had a very good relationship, and of course, that includes yard waste pickup. We've had a very good relationship with Waste Management through those 10 years. That was originally a five-year contract with the possibility for six, up to 10 years, five additional years, at our choosing, at the mutual agreement of both parties, which we did agree upon, and we've enjoyed good service. We did bid this out, and Waste Management was once again the low bidder. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Schweiger here momentarily to give you some of the details on that. Mr. Schweiger.
Thank you. Bids were opened recently for the city's residential waste collection program for the period commencing January 1, 2022, through December 31, 2026. Pricing was also requested for five option years for 2027 through 2031. The planned program largely continues the current scope of weekly garbage collection, inclusive of bulk item collection, every other week, collection of recyclable materials, and a weekly yard waste collection program from April through mid-December. The specification for days of collection, method of collection, and volume of acceptable material also remains largely comparable. Scope of the program also includes the city paying 50% of the cost of basic garbage service in accordance with existing legislation. The overall low bid was submitted by our current waste holler, Waste Management. The bid figures are shown in the attached two spreadsheets. It is of note that the cost per household in 2022 will actually decrease by 1.6% for the 93 out of 100 customers that utilize the one-card option. Additionally, the yard waste program, which is paid directly by the city, will cost less than the current year for the first three years of the new contract. Waste Management has provided a good level of service for the past several decades, and I recommend that they be awarded contract for the period 2022 through 2026. Thank you.
And council, I'll just add one thing. Essentially, this is the same service that we've enjoyed over the last decade. Probably the only change to this, and I know this is something that we've received a lot of comments on over the years, is I wish the recycling bin was a little bit bigger. So our residents will have the option to have that swapped out for the 96-gallon container versus the 64, if they choose, and that's included in this contract, and that would be at no cost to the residents if they choose to enact that provision. Otherwise, it's pretty much identical, and as Mr. Schweiger pointed out, a little discount from what we're paying in the first year, and I believe the increases work out to about 3% annually thereafter through years 2 through 5. And then, there's some language in there that allows for either an index that would dictate years 6 through 10, if we choose to enact those, or we could agree on a negotiated changes at that point as well. So we recommend approval.
On Wednesdays, when garbage is collected in my neighborhood, I look outside to see if it's the every other week, to see who's got the recyclables out. And that's to your point, that 10 years, when we were the first to have curbside recycling, how much the social consciousness has changed to that recycling is the norm, and that's a good thing. So thanks for pointing that out, council.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Marn?
To echo your comments, I mean, it really is amazing. 20 years ago, everyone remembered the old timers, so to speak, right? You'd have bulk pickup twice a year, where everyone threw it on a tree lawn, and then we had all the garbage pickers and all the junk yards, and, you know, that was twice a year. There was no yard waste, no such thing as recycling. And then we graduated to the bins, the wind would blow, and all the recycling would be blowing down the street. Then we had our recycling drop-offs. So, and that was, that was about $2 million at that time we were paying, right, Dave? Close to it, 1, 8, 2 million? So we're paying half, and our service is basically quadrupled, if you want to be technical. So great job with all the administration, and great job with Waste Management. Appreciate it.
Mr. Blake?
Ken, I'm happy to hear that residents can upgrade their recycle bins, because ours was picked up today, and I was literally pushing on the top of that thing. I couldn't have gotten another piece in there. So how would a resident go about getting that swapped out? Do they call the service department? Do they call Waste Management directly?
I think we're going to work through that, but I think either of those choices would work. They could certainly call our service department, but I'm sure that we'll have
So we're paying half, and our service is basically quadrupled, if you wanna be technical. So great job with all the administration, and great job with Waste Management. Appreciate it.
Mr. Blake?
Ken, I'm happy to hear that residents can upgrade their recycle bins, because ours was picked up today, and I was literally pushing on the top of that thing. I couldn't have gotten another piece in there. So how would a resident go about getting that swapped out? Do they call the service department? Do they call Waste Management directly?
I think we're gonna work through that, but I think either of those choices would work. They could certainly call our service department, but I'm sure that we'll have that contact information available here before this contract goes into place. Again, understanding this is a January 1 contract, we'll have that information available on our website and probably on their bills, on their quarterly billing statement as well.
Because I think they're gonna see a lot of those bins swapped out. For both bins, you know, for us, we've had them for a long time, and the wheels are starting to get loose, and some of them, especially the recycle bin, ours is like, it's ready to swap out, because it's old. So if you do have a bin that's in disrepair, the same process feeds out where you call whoever it is that you're gonna identify for us before January 1.
And that could happen today. If you have a bin in disrepair, they would replace it or fix it, and that service call is available to our residents right now, by calling their general information number.
I know as a homeowner, I've been very happy with the garbage service that we have. I get away from the guy every time I see him, very polite, they're very clean, they don't leave stuff blowing down the road, so, very good.
If I could too, counsel, I did wanna make mention of two other noteworthy components of this. And this was important to us, because I know it's important to council and the community from a sustainability standpoint. Waste Management did offer the only option by a provider for the fuel that they use. They're all compressed natural gas trucks now, going forward, their entire fleet. So again, that is one added benefit to our environment moving forward. And secondly, we did incorporate once again into this agreement the requirement that the waste be taken to the Lake County landfill, which again helps to support and sustain that operation for our public sector partners.
Mr. Kirchner.
When would this contract take effect?
January 1.
January 1, okay. Thank you.
Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Resolution number 21-R-110 has been adopted. Resolution number 21-R-111.
A resolution authorizing the Director of Finance to apply for and accept any eligible funding from the U.S. Department of the Treasury, authorized under the American Rescue Plan Act, including but not limited to reimbursing the city for any revenue losses in any given year from 2020 through 2024, and for any additional expenses incurred related to the COVID-19 pandemic, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mr. President. And this is simply a requirement of the Rescue Plan Act to authorize, council authorizing us to accept. We have already requested and received the first allocation. And I think, Mr. Malinowski, about in total, will be just under $4 million in our total allocation as an entitlement community. So this is just checking that box in terms of meeting the federal obligations.
Thank you. Counsel?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Resolution number 21-R-111 has been adopted. Resolution number 21-R-112.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to file an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Public Works Commission for the purpose of acquiring funds through the State Capital Improvement Program for the Chillicothe Fair Lawn Storm Sewer Improvement Project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mr. President. And these next three resolutions, including this one, are the authorizing the formal application for the three projects we submitted under the Ohio Public Works Program. I will let Mr. Swigger tell you about each of these, but I will tell you that we do anticipate receiving some funding for each of the three. Mr. Swigger.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. The Chillicothe Fair Lawn Storm Sewer Improvement Project is expected to cost approximately $278,000, and it will be partially funded by a $50,000 grant and $50,000 loan by the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement Program. The project is, was technically considered a reservoir project at the time the committee met, but we are hopeful that the project moves forward. The project will remove and replace approximately 530 feet of 24-inch storm sewer with 36-inch storm sewer under Fair Lawn Drive and Chillicothe Road to reduce flooding potential at that intersection and in some yards at the intersection. As part of the application process, it's necessary for city council, for the city manager to be authorized by city council to submit the final application and to execute the contracts. And this legislation is being presented to council for council action to meet the October 1 application deadline, and construction is anticipated to begin in the fall of 2022. Thank you.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Resolution number 21-R-111 has been adopted. Resolution number 21-R-112.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to file an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Public Works Commission for the purpose of acquiring funds through the State Capital Improvement Program for the Forest Road-Woodridge Lane Resurfacing Project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Swigger, please.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. The Forest Road-Woodridge Lane Resurfacing Project will resurface Forest Road from Woodridge Lane to Lake Overlook Drive and Woodridge Lane from Forest Road to Corroyer Road for a total length of about 1.25 miles. Project will also include full-depth pavement repairs and curb repairs as necessary. Project is expected to cost approximately $570,000 and will be partially funded with a $135,000 grant and a $150,000 loan by the Ohio Public Works Commission, and construction is anticipated to begin in the fall of 2022. Thank you.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Resolution number 21-R-112 has been adopted. Resolution number 21-R-113.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to file an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Public Works Commission for the purpose of acquiring funds through the State Capital Improvement Program for the Forest Road-Woodridge Lane Resurfacing Project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Swigger, please.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. The Forest Road-Woodridge Lane Resurfacing Project will resurface Forest Road from Woodridge Lane to Lake Overlook Drive and Woodridge Lane from Forest Road to Corroyer Road for a total length of about 1.25 miles. Project will also include full-depth pavement repairs and curb repairs as necessary. Project is expected to cost approximately $570,000 and will be partially funded with a $135,000 grant and a $150,000 loan by the Ohio Public Works Commission, and construction is anticipated to begin in the fall of 2022. Thank you.
Counsel?
Mr. President?
Does this pretty much complete our resurfacing and doing all the roads down the Headlands
area?
It will. The last project that we'll be constructing completely will be Brooksdale.
Okay.
But this will finalize the work in that area.
Okay, thank you. Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Resolution number 21-R-113 has been adopted. Resolution number 21-R-114.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to file an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Public Works Commission for the purpose of acquiring funds through the State Capital Improvement Program for the Market Street Rehab and Resurfacing Project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mr. President. And counsel may remember that this was a past OPWC project. About 10 years ago, we did an overlay on Market Street and expected to get about 10 years out of that, and we just about did, Mr. Swigger, correct?
Just about, yes.
So this, you know, we've reached a point where quite a bit more work is required to maintain that roadway. Mr. Swigger.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. The Market Street Rehab and Resurfacing Project will resurface Market Street from just east of Center Street to Munson Road, including the northern Munson Road intersection approach, which is about .5, .59 miles in length. Project also involves extensive full-depth concrete transverse joint repair, including load transfer dial installation. Project is expected to cost approximately $877,000, will be partially funded with a $288,500 grant and $150,000 loan by the Ohio Public Works Commission. Construction is also expected to start in the fall of 2022. Thank you.
Counsel?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Resolution number 21-R-113 has been adopted. Resolution number 21-R-114.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to file an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Public Works Commission for the purpose of acquiring funds through the State Capital Improvement Program for the Market Street Rehab and Resurfacing Project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mr. President. And counsel may remember that this was a past OPWC project. About 10 years ago, we did an overlay on Market Street and expected to get about 10 years out of that, and we just about did, Mr. Swigger, correct?
Just about, yes.
So this, you know, we've reached a point where quite a bit more work is required to maintain that roadway. Mr. Swigger.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. The Market Street Rehab and Resurfacing Project will resurface Market Street from just east of Center Street to Munson Road, including the northern Munson Road intersection approach, which is about .5, .59 miles in length. Project also involves extensive full-depth concrete transverse joint repair, including load transfer dial installation. Project is expected to cost approximately $877,000, will be partially funded with a $288,500 grant and $150,000 loan by the Ohio Public Works Commission. Construction is also expected to start in the fall of 2022. Thank you.
Counsel?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Resolution number 21-R-114 has been adopted. Resolution number 21-R-115.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to file an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Public Works Commission for the purpose of acquiring funds through the State Capital Improvement Program for the Market Street Rehab and Resurfacing Project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mr. President. And counsel may remember that this was a past OPWC project. About 10 years ago, we did an overlay on Market Street and expected to get about 10 years out of that, and we just about did, Mr. Swigger, correct?
Just about, yes.
So this, you know, we've reached a point where quite a bit more work is required to maintain that roadway. Mr. Swigger.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. The Market Street Rehab and Resurfacing Project will resurface Market Street from just east of Center Street to Munson Road, including the northern Munson Road intersection approach, which is about .5, .59 miles in length. Project also involves extensive full-depth concrete transverse joint repair, including load transfer dial installation. Project is expected to cost approximately $877,000, will be partially funded with a $288,500 grant and $150,000 loan by the Ohio Public Works Commission.[1356.14]
And please restrict your comments to things that might influence counsel to your position. At this time, I'd like to call Tom Erbaugh. Please state your name and address.
My name is Tom Erbaugh. I live at 5871 Mallard Court in Mentor. And I am not as eloquent as the law director, but I listened to what he was saying about the Bolton property, and I was, I was wondering why that same logic and same argument is not applied to this development. The last plan that I saw changed, how should I say it? The last plan that I saw, and if Ralph Victor is going to continue in that, would change the development to the, not to the betterment of Mentor, but to the worsening of the, of the whole neighborhood. If you look at Birdie Lane, which is right next to Sausalito, we all have 50-foot setbacks, and we all have a tree lawn, and we all have a sidewalk. The last plan I saw had a 30-foot setback and no tree lawn, and I'm wondering if there'll be, even be a sidewalk to walk on. The other thing is that proposal I saw of the houses that will be built there have 50% of the frontage of the house, which you look at from the street, will be garage door or garage, and then 50% is house. That does apply, there's nothing like that, there's nothing like that on Mallard Court, on Blue Jay, on Tannager, on any of the Sausalito streets. And walk over to Birdie Lane, it is totally, totally, completely different. So unless there is a huge change from what was proposed at Planning Commission, this is not for the betterment of Mentor. It is a degradation of the, of the neighborhood. It appears that it does not even come close to things like Lake Shore Highlands and the other RVG developments. And I guess even those developments were, well, discontinued when counsel revoked the RVG zoning in previous council. So that's all I have to, have to say. I don't think, from what I've seen, this has drastically changed, I don't think this is for betterment of Mentor.
Thank you, Mr. Erbaugh. Mr. Jeff Savage. Again, please state your full name and address, sir.
Jeff Savage, 5879 Mallard Court, Mentor. I just wanted to bring up something that's kind of come to my attention since it's right in my backyard. And as we all seen in the current news about all this historic flooding, like in New York City, down Louisiana, and all that with the hurricanes. And my, my position is, when you look at the land back there, and I can see it right off through my windows, I don't know how much of it is wetland, and I don't know how Hysley Creek is going to be able to handle the water, especially with other houses being built down there, how the runoff's going to be. Now luckily, my house doesn't have a basement, and my yard kind of goes down a bit, but other people's properties right next door to mine, they have basements. In fact, everybody else practically on my side of the street that faces that or backs up into that 14 and a half acres has basements. And my concern is, what's the groundwater going to be like? Because it doesn't look like those weather systems are going to change any in the next 30, 40, 50 years, whatever. It could be that we're going to start getting more heavier rains, and just last, well, was it in August 4th particularly, we had a bad storm that blew in for a short period of time and took out a house on our street. So I'm just concerned about what the storm sewers are going to do based on Birdie Lane and Mallard and the runoff coming down on a Blue Jay, or actually our runoff that goes down into Blue Jay. There may be some serious concerns. And that's what I wanted to make sure that we don't have, because I don't know how many houses you want, 30 houses, it could be too much of a runoff. And that's my main concern, because the weather systems are changing. You see these storms blowing in and orange trees take out a house, and who knows how much rain can come down and overflow everybody's yards, and particularly basements. And I don't know what they built in 76 or whenever they first laid out Mallard, but I don't know how big the storm sewer really is. But that's my piece on that. I just want to make sure that that's something that I've never really brought to attention except as most current weather. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Savage. And finally, we have Mrs. Dawn Krieger.
Actually Krueger.
Krueger, okay, I was guessing.
That's okay. It spelled the same, I believe. So thank you. I'm Dawn Krueger. I live at 5833 Mallard Court in Mentor. First, I'd like to thank you for giving us an opportunity to speak again tonight. I know that, especially Mr. Krieger, you know, you've listened to our concerns, our emails. We've been going through this for a year and a half, almost close to two years now. But, so some of the things I wanted to mention were, so why can a builder sue the city when the city is allowing him to build on his property under the zoning in which he purchased that property many, many years ago? Nobody is saying he can't build. It's R4, build R4. In April of 2020, he presented a plan with nine sublots, which appears as though it would have somewhere between 18 to 20 units. Okay, so, so that's what he should be allowed to build. Why would we agree as a city, and if somebody could answer this question, I would appreciate that, why would we agree upon 30 units versus going to a judge and having the judge see that the Planning Commission has turned it down? The city council has turned it down. The residents, all bordering Sausalito as well as Birdie Lane, the residents do not want it. We have a petition signed by over 300 people. Nobody wants this. So why would a judge allow it, or why would we compromise on 30 units when really the proposed should be around the 18 to 20?
I think once, once you've completed, I'll have an opportunity to get feedback on that.
And I guess, you know, that's, that's one of my, my biggest questions, you know, why wouldn't we want to take our chances in front of the judge when the judge sees all of the communications that poor Mr. Krieger has received from all of us, you know, time and time again? Why, I stop and I refer, I think Councilman Marn had read, you know, the invocation earlier, and, you know, the Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day, help us to use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom and a continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community that we represent. We are the community that you represent. That's one builder. It's, I know it only seems like a difference of 10 or 12 units to you folks, but it, it really is going to be a big difference in all of those flooding, traffic, all of those other things, the green space, the traffic noise from the highway. It really is going to be a big difference, and we ask that you, you know, make those decisions for the best, betterment of the community.
Thank you, Ms. Krueger. You may be seated.
Mr. President, can we have the law?
Mr. Krieger.
Law Director answer the questions concerning the water issue that Mr. Savage brought up and Mr. Erbaugh as far as, you know, some of the restrictions or some of the same things that he mentioned for the Bolton property and how that applies here?
Yes, I would defer to our law director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I may retake the podium. The water runoff is a code issue. Pre and post-development runoff has to be the same. I'd actually think that, you know, perhaps the administration is much better equipped to answer those, those questions as to how they'll control water management post-development than I could. And then perhaps if I could retake the podium, I'll walk you through some of the other aspects of the settlement and how the RVG, you know, ticks off a few of the, of the concerns, certainly not all of them.
Please do.
Mr. President?
If we, we could, we could address that, and Mr. Swiger, would you like to address that?
Sure. The concern is stormwater discharge and flooding and impacts the downstream homes, but the City of Mentor has a code requirement, which is for stormwater detention on any proposed development. And the, the requirement is that the developer, development provide for stormwater detention. And the post-development runoff versus pre-development runoff, a comparison is made, and the post-development runoff cannot exceed the pre-development runoff. And in fact, it needs to be less than, up to a certain point, which is called a critical storm. So we'll determine, along with the developer's engineer, what that is, and we'll hold the, the post-development runoff by use of detention basin facilities typically to a one-year storm event up until the critical storm, and then it's allowed to be discharged at the pre-development rate. So in no case can it be larger than the pre-development stormwater discharge into our current system. So that's why the system won't need to be upgraded to typically handle a development because the detention handles.
And Dave, if I may, I know we've had discussions with the increasing intensities, seemingly, Mr. Savage alluded to that. Has our standard design for the storm sewer pipes, has that changed over time?
We have adopted the higher rates.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yeah, why don't you?
I guess, I'll say something on stormwater. This council has never been more concerned about stormwater and developments. You know that we want to, all our developments that are going on right now is, we probably bring up stormwater first. We don't need stormwater going into other people's yards and increasing that amount. And I know that in engineering and everyone else, that's a huge thing for us. We don't want to send water just because somebody's building a development into somebody else's property. And let's do the best we can to, to make sure we ensure that, we could do the best we can to keep that, keep that water contained and keep it to the amount that they're getting now. And you know, I think everybody would agree, it's one of our pet peeves here is, just because somebody else is bettering themselves, we don't need to make things worse for other people. Thank you, Dave.
Before I make the law director jack-in-box again, is there anyone else from council that has a comment at this time? And please to the podium, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Granted, I think a lot of the concerns that were raised aren't necessarily legal, and they are policy considerations, obviously, for this council to deliberate and vote on tonight. The RVG district, as, as the council is aware, is, is something which, this is one of the final proposals under that, that was made under that old zoning classification. It's now been sort of usurped by a planned development district regulations, which are much more detailed, a little bit more state-of-the-art. But the purpose of the RVG was to, to take these sort of odd parcels, so to speak, and try to work creatively with them. And you can do things under the RVG that you can't do under current R4. Now, I'm not making a value determination, I'm just saying that those are the legal facts. One of the concerns, obviously, was with preservation of some of the trees. Under current zoning, oops, you'll see on, on this edge of the, the property here where it abuts to the, the current cul-de-sac, now they see those parcels, because they're on the cul-de-sac, they expand, significant the rear property line. This will be a 65-foot buffer in there, preserved open space, can't touch it, there's an existing tree line there, of course. That becomes something which is preserved under the RVG and this proposed agreement that Victor Construction has submitted to my office, which you can't accomplish under current R4 zoning. There, there really, while there is a rear yard setback required under R4 zoning, the preservation of that tree line in perpetuity is not something that you can accomplish. So if you've got trees in your backyard, you pull the proper permits, ultimately you can clear that, make use of it as you see fit. So it's going to provide a result that can't be accomplished under current zoning, if, if that result is, is, you know, value is placed upon that and weight is given to that. That is a consideration. So I guess that really sort of dovetails into, yes, you're providing for probably more units than could be potentially parceled out under current zoning, but you're doing that as a trade-off to provide some relief to the adjacent property owners so that a lot of what they've enjoyed in terms of the view amenity, preservation of the tree lines and things of that nature are something that they can continue to enjoy in the future. So again, there's, settlement is part of a compromise, and ultimately, you're going to give a little bit to get a little bit, and it's a value judgment as to, you know, how you weigh those different factors. The, superimpose an aerial, but part of on the site development plan, you can see some of the existing built structures here, which are shown. And so you'll see, you know, somewhat comparable in terms of now that it's only 30 units total that can be built under this proposed plan. You'll see that the lot sizes have increased and the distance separation between some of the structures have increased as well, a little bit more comparable, of course, to the existing adjacent zoned areas. So that said, are they going to look like the, the housing that is constructed adjacent? Absolutely not. They're, they're going to be, look completely different. It's really very difficult as a builder to replicate someone else's product, not just from a copyright standpoint, but also because the market changes. And I think to Mr. Erbaugh's point, yeah, they're going to be somewhat garage-centric. I think that's probably a fair characterization. Now, these are actually part of the proposal, some of these renderings. And most are one-story. And so you're not going to have anything ostentatious constructed over there. They are deep. Most of these newer housing product that we're seeing now in the market, and I'm speaking in part from my private practice, where I work for developers and builders, first-floor master suites are now extremely popular. And so most of the floor plans that have been submitted have large first-floor master suites. That's just where the market's heading. And so you'll see on these, on these new housing plans, very, very deep structures. They're not necessarily as, some of the older product that we've seen in ranches around the city, they're very wide, not very deep. Now they're going fairly narrow and somewhat deep. Again, just providing greater privacy for those first-floor masters. Very often, now you're seeing product where there's an integrated back porch, which is screened in, it's part of the structure. And again, it's accommodating where the market is in terms of the home buyers and what they're looking for in terms of home amenities. Some of the, and these are all part of the proposed settlement agreement. Another rendering, again, limited second story. The architectural treatments that you'll see, again, part of the proposed settlement, 25% of the front facade does have to be brick or stone, cultured stone product. And so they'll have some harmony within this, this, this development. Again, not going to match the existing product in the adjacent community. And this is probably one of the larger floor plans that you'll, that, that were submitted by the builder. Again, a larger second story, sort of a craftsman style, a little less garage-centric, obviously. The larger lot sizes will allow for a slightly larger house to be constructed as well, and that again is another thing that may weigh in the council's decision-making process for the settlement proposal. So again, going back to the proposed development plan, I just want to highlight, again, the way the RVG is structured is you have a building footprint pad, so the dark areas, that's where the structure can go, can go not, nowhere outside of that. Another aspect of this is that you're not going to see the backyard sheds, you're not going to see a lot of those other service structures and things, you know, that, that another style of development may, may require out of necessity. So the hashed-in areas, that's called an exclusive homeowner's area, and that's where you can have your garden or your vegetable, you know, plants or whatever. So that would be exclusive to the homeowners. But the shaded areas is where actual something built will occur. And so a little bit more green space than, than may appear simply on the black and white development plan. And again, I think when you have an aerial of the build-out, it'll, it'll be fairly comparable to what you're seeing in some of the developed areas that are adjacent to it. Not perfectly comparable, again, you're maintaining the existing unit density there, and also the architectural control is another aspect of this, which you don't have under R4. Under R4, there's absolutely no way to mandate the front facade building materials as this proposed settlement agreement does by virtue of the RVG district and that settlement, as well as integrating the exact style of homes. So it's going to be its own thing, there's no question about that. That I think is objectively reasonable, and it's going to appeal to a specific home buyer looking for those first-floor master suites and, and, and limited care and maintenance of the surrounding curtilage of their property. And again, part of the weighted trade-off of that is a little bit higher unit count than maybe potentially could be squeezed in under current zoning, but you're going to be able to preserve some tree, some areas of the existing tree canopy in perpetuity. And again, various considerations, sometimes the, it's obviously subjective as to, as to what members of the public may put greater weight on than others, but overall, it does accomplish the purpose and intents that were, that were highlighted as reasons for the denial. Too many units and the ultimate control over the building product as well. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, counsel.
Mrs. Eamon?
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Krueger asked, after being turned down by planning, by council and so on, how can it go before a judge?
Oh, everything can go before court is the short answer. As we say in the legal profession, the doors of the courthouse are open to everybody. So there's no, ultimately what it's about is, land use is, is there's different theories on land use control. It's, there's the do no harm, do whatever you want with your property, just leave your neighbors alone. That's, that's fairly archaic at this point. Now we're a little bit more focused on, on what is best overall for the community. Prohibiting any development whatsoever comes, is, can be done. Say, all right, this property shall never be developed. That comes at a public price. Because once you eliminate all economic value for property for public use, that is a taking, that is a regulatory taking, and compensation must be paid to the property owner for that. That's black letter law here in this country. What you get into right now, I think, is really more of a policy debate. How should this be developed? Not whether it should be developed, because it can be developed. How should it be developed? Should there be weight given to controlling some of the open spaces so that rather than seeing some clear-cutting adjacent to the, these property lines and the adjacent, you know, development, some of that forested area can be preserved? Again, it's, if you leave it up to a court or you leave it under current zoning, you may, you may have results that ultimately are not favorable in the grand scheme of things. And it may not be one thing, it may be several things. Or it may not be what one person considers very, very significant, but it may be something that someone else may be considered very significant. So there's really a balancing of interests here. And anyone can file, you know, legal challenges to our zoning. We're looking, when we're looking at a settlement, to see what accomplishes purpose and intents of the city zoning code, what accomplishes some of the concerns that were raised in the approval process that may have led to the denial. And so the reason I brought this before council is because the unit count, increasing the density from what currently can be under current zoning and matching that of the adjacent Sausalito development was highlighted in all the public hearings as a concern. Architectural control was highlighted as a concern, and of course, preserving some of that open space as well is highlighted as a concern. So we've brought something in front of the council that I hope addresses all of those issues. But no, we're not going to address every single issue that, that a resident may, may raise. They're all meritorious, but when it comes to land use, there's always a balancing of interest between the property owner and the community. And we, I hope this strikes the correct balance. We've worked very hard on the settlement agreement, and that why, that is why I think upon review of all of the public hearings and the reasons that it was met with the denial, this settlement agreement addresses those concerns. We'll never address all of the concerns, but I think hopefully it ticks off most of those boxes, and which is why I brought it to the council for approval.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, questions for the law director? Thank you again, Mr. Law Director.
Thank you.
I would remind counsel that this is second reading, and if you choose to act, we would need a motion to suspend, followed by a motion for approval.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
No.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
No.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Ordinance number 21-O-045 has been approved. Third reading, we have none. Managers report. Ken?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have much for you this evening, counsel, just want to bring to your attention that we have two pretty good events this week with respect to our international trade work that we're doing. This will be our fourth annual conference on innovation and trade, which this year, as it was in 2020, is a virtual conference that will begin tomorrow at 8:30 in the morning. And I think, Mr. Malick, we have about 20, 25 or so?
Yes, about, about 25 delegates.
So did you want to speak a little bit about that agenda?
Sure. This is a, primarily, these delegate companies are from our partnership organization, Medialink Midlands, and we are highlighting, obviously, the healthcare attractiveness of our region. We have Jobs Ohio, the Cleveland Clinic, University Hospitals Ventures, and some legal counsel that will be speaking to these various companies that will be on this call tomorrow. Some of them are repeat customers, for lack of a better term, from last year's conference, but it should be two and, two, two and a half hours of action-packed information on why they would want to locate their, their companies here in Mentor.
And then secondly, we, on Thursday, we have one of our seminars, which we have been trying to do on a quarterly basis over the years since we began the international trade program. This one will be on international contracts and agreements, and it's, in fact, it's international contracts and agreements, know your party, what you do not know can hurt you. Again, this will also provide legal credits for those attorneys who attend, but also
I will say it's a truly international seminar, because we will be having one of the speakers joining us from Brazil via teleconference.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Marn?
Before moving forward, just like to, on behalf of all of council, I'm sure I could say thank you for the great summer of recreation, from everything at Wallowood to Mentor Lagoons to Mentor Rocks. I mean, Mentor Rocks lineup had to be the best of all time, and it was just unbelievable how talented some of these bands are that came through and how much they enjoy playing again, and what a good time they all had. Especially last week, we had about 10,000 people there for the Escape Band, which is one of our local bands, and everyone had truly a great time. But thank you once again for all their hard work.
Thank you, councilman, and again, you know, that credit, the predominant credit goes to our Parks and Recreation staff, our police department, who, you know, manage large crowds like that on a weekly basis, and again, and our Recreation Department that just continues to put out some great content for all ages, and, you know, we're really proud of their efforts.
If Mr. Kaminsky was here, I was going to ask him for a total attendance for the summer.
We'll have to work on that number.
A great number, but it's got to be somewhere around 80,000 to 100,000, you know, including the lagoon concerts, so public participation is huge.
And very satisfied with the public's response this year.
Great. Clerk's correspondence, Julie.
Counsel is in receipt of a liquor license transfer from Speedway LLC at 6885 Center Street to Midwest Convenience, Inc., DBA Rebel 902 at 6885 Center Street. That is all.
Commission committee reports, meeting minutes, Municipal Planning Commission, July 29, 2021. Old Business.
Mr. President.
Mr. Kirschner.
I'm pretty sure this falls under old business. I wanted to make some comments about my disappointment with the product we've received so far at City Market from the Visconti Development Corporation. As you know, back in, it was about 2015 or 16, we presented, we were presented with a grand plan for an upscale retail center that would include an 87,000-square-foot grocery store, which would entail demolishing three office buildings and a warehouse, 45,000-square-foot health club, and an 8,400-square-foot multi-tenant retail center just north of the grocery store. The fitness club required the demolition of the roofing company, I believe, that was there. We also lost Moldmasters, which was a manufacturer, we lost them to another community. The 87,000-square-foot grocery store turned out to be a 50-some-thousand groceries, undersized Giant Eagle, which as far as jobs are concerned, was awash because they closed the Plaza Boulevard Giant Eagle down. During that discussion of, that Mr. Goldberg had at the time, he mentioned that he used the example of the center that is across from South Park on a smaller scale, but it would be comparable. I can assure you that I've seen that development across from South Park, it doesn't come close to what we have been presented thus far. He also mentioned there were several tenants that expressed interest in locating there and many others waiting in the wings and waiting for the rezoning to take place. So what we've gotten so far is a Wendy's, a Taco Bell's, an undersized Giant Eagle, and now we've got a Starbucks being proposed. So basically what's happened, and they're plugging in fast foods to, in these sites that we thought, and we, and the voters thought, when they re-zoned this property, were going to be upscale retail. There's also comments made about the properties along 615 that were fronting 615, that would be when their leases were up, they were going to purchase them, and that would all become part of this whole plan, which I have a copy of that they originally showed here. So, you know, it's not a lot we can do now. I know I talked to Mr. Goldberg, and he didn't give any indication that there was any, going to be any changes that the vision that he had sold us and sold, and then we in turn had asked our voters to approve, isn't going to change. So I know what we're going to see coming forward, I think there's about maybe three or four more small lots left that I'm sure will be plugged in with fast food or similar, whatever they can get in there. But, you know, it's important to note, too, that we also put in well over $1 million in improvements from our funds to make this happen, based on what they presented to us. Now, I know, I mentioned to Mr. Goldberg, I know with pandemic and this brick-and-mortar issues, but, you know, it's odd that we could, we got a Trader Joe's that's coming to Mentor, we've got a big mixed-use development project that's going on Mentor Avenue, we've got Candados coming in, I didn't know of any, and he didn't mention that they talked to people like Whole Foods or anyone else that would be, would want to come to Mentor, but so my disappointment is what it is, and what's there now is what it is. I noticed the get-go is on and off development, sometimes they put footers in and you don't see them, so, but for right now, going forward, what I'd like to see is the administration come down on them about the, not only the landscaping that's there, but the architecture, those brick, nondescript brick columns that are sitting there. I have no idea what their plans are for them, because they're just sitting there. There's no wrought iron in between them, there's no lighting on them, there's no landscaping integrity at all. The landscaping that's there now is just laying flat with low growth on it. So I was, my proposal would be that we don't do anything with any more development there until they come back with at least, at the very least, we can get decent landscaping out of them and different architecture for what they've put up there so far. Because I actually fully expect, I was waiting for something to happen with those columns. I thought, well, they're going to put in wrought iron there now, or they're going to put in some nice mounding, and, you know, something similar to what they said they was comparable to South Park. So we haven't seen any of that, and, you know, I'm disappointed in the product, and it's not going to change because it's too late, they've already, you know, made, you know, they've already moved in the direction of putting whatever they can get in there, apparently. That's my understanding, my feeling, so. Thank you, and any comments would be welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Kirschner. Again, I think we share your disappointment in what could have been there. I think the law director made a point that's relevant here, sometimes we have little control over the final outcome. Some of the things that our development agreement with, in this case, Visconti, did provide for were better architectural standards, more brick, separation between the buildings, and the normal planning concepts that, you know, that we required, you know, better access off of Tyler Boulevard. But in terms of what goes there, you know, council's aware that sometimes it's just either market-driven or opportunity-driven. And I think when you're dealing with larger developers like Visconti that work in multiple communities and often have deals going with multi-location deals where, you know, there's deals being made, we're obviously not a part of those discussions. We're hoping that the final phase of that development might yield something better, but I think in terms of what we can ask of them, from the two points that you mentioned, the visual content along the right-of-way and just off the right-of-way, is something that we can continue to try to press them to improve. Not everything works out the way we hope it will, and this is certainly one of those locations where I think we can say that's the case.
As a final footnote, I'd also say that they were not receptive to meeting with us. Mr. Malachek made numerous attempts to contact Mr. Goldberg. My position was we should meet face-to-face. At some point, we had set up a time and a place to meet here at City Hall, and we were waiting for them to say what time they were going to be here on that day, and he said, well, I'm busy, I have another commitment, can we do it, I can do it from another community. I said, not interested. If you can't even come and meet with us after all the attempts to contact them, to meet us, and spend the kind of money we put in to make that roadway improvements, I just washed my hands of it, I said, well, there's nothing's going to change. So going forward, all I can think of that we can do to improve it is to enhance the landscaping and the architecture, so.
Any other old business? Ms. Dowling?
I don't think anyone on council would disagree with the word that Ray said, and based on two pieces of legislation we passed this evening, and I think Ken touched on it, but perhaps, I hate to put Joe on the spot, but perhaps Joe could explain why our dismay at what happened at that development, how these settlement agreements can avoid a similar situation, what progress we have made, and?
Yes.
Because, I mean, we're, we just passed two large pieces of legislation tonight, and I'm sure the public is just sitting there shaking their heads, so.
Right. Again, a settlement agreement is, allows for a level of control, because the terms of the settlement agreement bind the property owner, and frankly, in ways that you can't often legislate, because again, it's, they're voluntarily agreeing to certain restrictions that are enforceable via court order. In the case of the Visconti City Market development, it was rezoned under a current district, and that district regulations provides for a variety of uses, commercial uses as of right. So that you have these quick-service restaurants that, you know, the Giant Eagle was permitted there, various businesses that, as Mr. Filippiak indicated, the market supports, and therefore these businesses are eager to locate here, and they have the ability to, you know, close on a deal, because they've, they can meet an asking price, and they can deliver a product, and they know they're going to get a return on their investment here in the city of Mentor, as opposed to potentially waiting on a longer timeline for more niche products, maybe businesses that would be new to our marketplace, that don't have the supply chain that will allow them to construct a facility here until such time as they're ready to enter into our market. Certainly if we're talking about a small, what we call mom-and-pops, you know, the independent businesses, entry into the market can be very cost-prohibitive, because commercial property is extremely expensive here in Mentor. So as Mr. Filippiak indicated, it's market-responsive, it's, when you're a developer, you're taking, you're moving a product, and that's the purpose of these developments. And we can only enforce whatever the laws allow us to enforce. And so if someone's coming in and saying, I want to construct something which is permitted as of right, we can't say no. They are permitted as of right. Now, compare that with the settlement agreements that council has approved tonight, where the property owner has come to the city and saying, you know, we agree to restrict how this can be developed, and we agree that the city controls modifications to that development plan. That is a complete opposite of how the City Market rezoning progressed. And whether that's good or bad ultimately isn't for me to say, but that's the legal reality, is we just lack that heightened level of control over that project.
Thank you.
Any other old business, counsel? Hearing none, new business.
Mr. President.
Mr. Marn?
I solved your problem. You download your Waste Management app, it tells you exactly, like my next pickup is next Monday, September 13th, and then my recycling is September 20th. It's all right there, you get your billing, everything's right there, and you can also go green.
My problem actually wasn't that severe, because my wife Barrett tells me, so we're covered, even without an app, thank you.
No problem, sir.
New business.
Mr. President, I would move that we go into executive session. Okay, I'm holding off.
Persons before counsel? There are none. Proceed, Mr. Kirschner.
You gave me that look like it's time, so anyways, I move that we go into executive session to discuss acquisition of real estate for a public purpose where premature disclosure would create an unfair competitive advantage.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. President, I would move that we adjourn.
Second.
This meeting is adjourned.